Call the meeting to order, please rise for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Ms. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Ms. Seber.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Alonso.
Ms. Maddick.
Here.
Thank you. A couple of quick announcements. Ms. Alonso, Iris is not here because she is captain of our lacrosse team and she's playing a game tonight. So, she's got her priorities, so she's here, not here for a reason. She doesn't miss very often. And we'd like to welcome our Mayor, Mr. Hal Parish. Thank you for being here, sir. Kind of stumbled through there. And former school board member and current council lady, Pam Sibeski, who I walked in with and I still didn't realize she was here. It's not easy being me. I'm telling you.
Just thought she was sitting up here somewhere.
That's right. Okay. Dr. McGorick, do we have additions or deletions to the agenda?
We do. We have the school year 2017-2018 school calendar revision. We have a proposed school year 2018-2019 calendar, and these will be added to the discussion agenda and to the consent agenda, a personnel addendum.
Thank you. Are there announcements and spotlights?
There is one.
Ms. Radford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. McGorick. Good evening to other members of the board, and good evening to all of you who have joined us tonight. I'm very pleased to stand before you to share one group of recognitions for the evening, and I will be assisted tonight by Dr. Athene Bell, our K-12 English and Language Arts Specialist. She's going to help us recognize our 2017 spelling bee winners. Dr. Bell.
Dr. McGorick, Mr. Di Maria, members of the school board. It is with great pleasure that I'm here this evening to present to you the 2016-17 school year MCPS winners of our local spelling bee contests. All of our elementary schools, as well as Mayfield and Metz Junior High School, participated in the bee this year, and tonight they are being recognized as winners from each of their respective schools. Tonight, you will see students from grades one through eight who have studied, prevailed, and achieved success within each of their schools. I would like to sincerely thank all of the school sponsors of the bee who have worked to plan and conduct each spelling bee. Congratulations to each of these fine young spellings.
I'm going to ask Dr. Bell to join our chairman and Dr. McGorick up front. You know, I'm going to get the certificates here. Okay. From Baldwin Elementary, our winner was Ada Husband, fourth grader, and she was sponsored by Jennifer Thompson. Her principal, Ms. Goldsong, is here, so we're going to ask that she would join her up front. From Jenny Dean, we have Wajid Akhtar, fourth grader, sponsored by Sue Kelly. From R.C. Hayden Elementary, we have fourth grader Emma Lindenfelsner, sponsored by Rachel Foddeness Emma will be joined by her principal, Dr. Wilder. From Round Elementary, we have a first grader that won it for her school, Ayana Mans, sponsored From Williams Elementary, fourth grader Savannah Pinette, sponsored by Heather James. From Mayfield Intermediate School, fifth grader Alicia Island, sponsored by Linda
We will move on to committee reports. Academics, Mr. Williams.
No report, but we will be discussing calendar changes during the agenda.
Thank you very much.
And from Metz Middle School, eighth grader Naomi Ho, sponsored by Matilda Jimenez.
Mr. Albrecht, education sport.
No report, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer, policy.
No report, but we will be voting on the policies presented at the last meeting.
On the consent.
Congratulations to all of our fine spellers.
On the consent.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Finance, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you so much.
We had our last finance meeting last week, and the budget will be presented this evening.
I think Mr. Lyon is going to take your picture.
We have everyone.
Yeah, just kind of that way.
And Ms. Seber, anything on personnel? Come down here.
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me make two rows. Perfect. Board member comments. Ready, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Ms. Maddick, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple things I wanted to share with everyone.
That's good. We'll get out of the way.
A few of them are happening at Osborne and have happened at Osborne that made me really
Congratulations. That concludes them for tonight.
proud to be a student and a community member here in Manassas City Public Schools. Osborne participated in a project called "We Are Osborne" where students made posters and we hung them up along the wall in like the back hallways, and it says anything like, "We are, we are strong, we are confident, we are yearbook," and the whole wall, they had to go into the cafeteria, is plastered with these posters, anything you can imagine. And it's so great just to see like the school coming together, and we're very diverse and we do all kinds of different things, but at the end of the day, we are all Osborne. And as you walk through the hallway, it's almost surreal, like you're like, you just, I bump into people, I'm just like, oh my gosh, look at this wall. It's so great, and it makes me really proud to be a student at Osborne. And another thing that happened just in the last week that makes me really proud to be a student at Osborne is, I don't know if everyone knows, but we had a student at Osborne undergo a very serious surgery, his name is Jamie, and the whole school, I think every student at Osborne might have written him a card saying, "Good luck, get well," and we did this whole thing in the auditorium, and it was so great. My friend Peyton put it together, and it was just amazing to see everyone come together and write him a card. So, I'm just really proud to be a student at Osborne right now, seeing all the things we've done to come together as a school. And the last thing that is not related to Osborne is that Thursday, April 6th, is the academic carnival at Round, so everyone get out and go to that, it's a lot of fun, it's free, and also they're always looking for volunteers. So, any students need volunteer hours, go check that out. Oh, one last thing, I totally forgot. The applications to be a student representative to the school board are now out, and I love this position, this is my second year on this position, and I've learned so much, I think I've grown a lot as a person, so if you're interested in leadership or local politics, you should definitely go get an application and try to have this position next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to start off by saying, I will tell you, the budget process has been a learning experience for me. The first thing I learned was that this year's process began long before half of us were even on this board. I also learned that with the federal and state funds and the accompanying mandates and rules, we don't have as much control as I would like us to have, unfortunately. That being said, this year's process will help better prepare all of us for next year. I especially want to thank the Central Office Finance Department for their patience they've extended me as I've attempted to delve into this process. Students, keep up the good work. Everywhere I go, I see great examples of our talented students. This past weekend, my wife and I visited the city museum and actually ran into two other board members there for History Day and the great projects the kids from Metz and Osborne prepared. And while we were there, we also saw the Illusions Art Exhibit, which displays great artwork of our students, and that's running through April 16th, so if you haven't been there, you still have time. And spring sports are in full swing, stealing this from Tim, but...
That's okay.
Please come out and support our teams. The student and adult season passes that you bought back in September to attend football are still good, their whole year passes, so come on out, support our teams. I've been at a few lacrosse and soccer games, and unfortunately, it's mostly just parents at these games, and I really would like to see a lot more people out there. And lastly, Friday, Thursday and Friday, we had a Will to Survive at Osborne High School, and this was a phenomenal program that the Education Foundation and several other groups brought to Osborne, and I just want to say it was a great, great program for the kids. You know, there were a lot of, when I attended, I saw quite a few people touched by the experience. But, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams.
Hello, everybody. Congratulations to the spelling bee winners. I think that's always so exciting. I love to see the little first grader, she was so cute. I want to first start with letting everybody know that the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation is offering six scholarships. The first is a Superintendent Scholarship, sponsored by Dr. and Mr. McGorick. For those who are pursuing a teacher career, we definitely need those, so if anybody is considering that, please reach, I'll tell you where to go at the end. There's a CTE Scholarship, sponsored by Micron, a Fine Arts Scholarship, that is actually sponsored by several of the citizens of the city, and I'm not quite sure exactly who, I know one of them, but there are others, so I'm going to just, when I find out, I'll announce who those sponsors were. There's also the Delegate Harry J. Parish Community Services Scholarship, which is sponsored by the Parish family. Thank you, Mayor. There's a Pathway Scholarship, sponsored by Mr. and Mrs. Barlett, and three STEM Scholarships, sponsored by Lockheed Martin and Micron. Applications can be found online at the Manassas City Public Schools, so it's mcpsedfoundation.org. And I'm telling you this because you've got to go look at it tonight if you have not already to pursue this, because applications are due on the 31st, so you want to find out what the guidelines are and get those applications in. Second, actually, Scott just came back from Denver. They've had a National School Board Association Conference out there, and there were a couple award winners for the 2017 Magna Grand Prize winners, which were presented there, right? You saw them there. So, one of the grand prize winners was just awarded from Upper St. Clair School Districts. The Magna Award winners, they discover new and different ways to help their students and communities. Upper St. Clair is a high-performing district that ranks consistently as one of the top Pennsylvania districts, and was ranked by the U.S. Newsweek as the 113th national, throughout the whole entire nation, just last year. They accomplish this ranking by doing all kinds of creative things. They try new ideas. In fact, creativity has always been a hallmark of their state district. This allows staff and its teachers, staffs, anybody who touched the kids, to kind of think outside of the box and try new things. Oh, I forgot one thing about the scholarships. I'm not good at multitasking. So, let me finish this and I'll go back about the fine arts. Anyway, their creativity that the teachers and staff has, they promote ideas that carry over into the classroom. This has really, really resonated with me when I read about these awards, because as we move forward on voting on a budget tonight, which includes taking a risk, we're taking a risk, we're trying something new, but most, the most compassionate, most special, most best teachers we have are teaching and helping, doing intervention with our kids, but we're going to be voting on that tonight, and I'm not sure which way that will go, but I just want you to know how important it is that we do things outside the box, and perhaps it is best that our best teachers do move back into the classroom. But, I don't know. But, this is innovation, this is new, it's creativity, and it's something that might be worth trying. Another scholarship that I forgot to mention is the Performing Arts Scholarship. So, get your applications in, guys. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Seber.
Good evening, everybody. I again wanted to echo the congratulations to the spelling bee winners, and just to comment on, the weather is starting to change, people are getting out more, please go and see our kids. They're at the museum, they're in City Hall, they're on the field, and even if you don't have a student or a child in those sports, take your younger kids out to see them, it's something that they can say, "Hey, look at those guys out there, or look at those ladies out there." Kids are doing great things, and tonight, I got to stop by the Jenny Dean, they're having a steam night tonight, and that's for science, technology, engineering, art, and math, and I got to make this really cool lightsaber. But, I was also greeted by some young men in bright green ties and their khakis and nicely pressed white shirts, and they were shaking hands and leading parents through the school, and it was just so nice to see, there were so many activities that it wasn't getting clogged up with kids, you know, where they couldn't have a chance, everybody had a chance to do what they wanted to do, and it was just really fun to see so many things going on. And that's about all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I just wanted to also congratulate the spelling bee winners. I remember when I was in a spelling bee, it's actually a mortifying experience, but yet a good one, and one that you never forget the word you missed. So, congratulations to them. I wanted to just echo Mr. O'Hanlon, I was able to go to see the History Day at the museum, and Doug Horhota of the Manassas Museum, along with Mrs. Neal and Mrs. Witt from our city schools, really came together in partnership, and I really liked to see the idea of the city and the schools coming together to do great things. So, I'm glad that some folks got out to see it. I encourage folks to go see the kids' art, it is phenomenal, and just to constantly, as Mrs. Seber said, just go and see what's going on in our schools and in our community. Also, at Metz last Thursday was the Family Wellbeing Night. I wanted to thank the Manassas City Wellness Advisory Committee, the Inner Service Club Council members, and the many community sponsors who made that happen. It's a good showing of our families coming out, learning about and getting tests about various things and hearing and whatnot, so it's just really good to see folks come out in that capacity. I also wanted to congratulate Metz Middle School, because they're making a whole lot of music and doing really well at it. The orchestra received four superior ratings at the state assessment, and the band received three superior ratings, so I wanted to also congratulate Mrs. Dawson and Mr. Bill Stevens and others who make those kids shine, and shine they did. I also want to echo that this budget process is hard, it's long, there's a lot of conversation that goes into it, and there's a whole lot of hard work, so I look to the staff that are both here tonight, but also everybody in the schools that really kind of, it started, I think, in September, and it's been going ever since, and also to those who've come and put some public input into that process that we've really had good conversation about and try to do our best up here as we make these hard decisions. With that said, I'm just also going to wish, I know some SOLs have already started, so we'll continue to cheer the kids on and the teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I'll be brief tonight. First, I echo the congratulations to the spelling winners. I talked to the first grade young lady from Round who won, and she said that the word she spelled was applause when she won. I'm like, adults can't spell applause, you know, so that's pretty impressive, first grade. So, congratulations to them, some of the great things we're in our school system that don't get talked about enough. My second item is, I wasn't going to bring it up outside too anyway, my son, who's a second-year medical student, Wake Forest, North Carolina, whose birthday's today, it's my birthday, you know, I know he's not watching, he better be studying, but he texted me this morning, and he texted me an article I saw about Osborne High School, and, you know, I haven't talked to him yet about it because he's studying all day and working, but I did want to say, it's disturbing that folks travel and rumor in the window and would show a lack of respect for other folks and talk about things they don't know things about. So, I would just ask all the adults in our community to just be respectful about the process and things going on, what you're doing, say, reflect it upon our town, and that my son in North Carolina, who all he's been doing is studying for his board exams and watching NCAA basketball, that's it for the last month or so, would concede and would talk about it, you know, the disturbing that it'd be traveling that far, so just be respectful of each other, that's all I can say. The kind of things we want our kids to do, please act in that fashion. My last item is Women's History Month. This is Women's History Month, I haven't heard a lot said about it, but women have come a long way in our society, obviously. I mean, look up here, look at our superintendent, but there are still things we need to address, there's still a great deal of sexism in our society, women aren't paid on the same level as men are, and women are the backbone of our society, they do much more of the work at home than men do, and they still hold it down in the workforce. So, please be mindful of encouraging our women and our young girls, and hopefully one day we'll have parity and equality for all sexes. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. It's Albrecht.
Thank you, sir. As Mrs. Williams mentioned, I just got back from Denver, it was last night or this morning, I honestly forget. Well, I had the pleasure of Friday of representing the Commonwealth in the Delegate Assembly of the National School Board Association, where we had meaningful dialogue across all 50 states and federal issues and how they impact us, and it brings home to roost that we're not unique in our challenges. Every state has their own, and certainly there's a renewed impetus in the current administration to continue to push down education to the local, the state level. Maybe that'll mean less regulation from the federal government, we don't know, but it's certainly not going to mean more money. I spent Saturday, Sunday, yesterday, going to a lot of sessions, really uplifting educational sessions on things, the Magna Award winners, as Robyn just mentioned, a jazz band out of Missouri that, I'd have bought their CD if they had one, they were fantastic, and the young lady who spoke sounded like, who sang, sounded like Ella Fitzgerald. She was incredible. And it just highlights the good things happening in education. And, of course, those were all the good sessions, then when you're networking in the hallways, you talk about the things that are not so good, and I happened to speak to a journalist, and I said, "How come all we ever read about in the papers is bad things about education, when there are so many good things happening?" And this lady wrote for the Denver Post, and she said, "Well, here's what they train you in journalism school, write about news, and if it happens all the time, it's not news, so you don't write about dog bites man, you write about man bites dog." So, I guess that means the few times we actually hear the negative things or hear the bad things in the newspaper, the radio, whatever about education, there must be 100 to 200 good things happening, and certainly our spelling bee winners tonight, all the examples we have, really, I think, personify that, so. We do have a budget tonight, it was a great process this entire board put together, I think, especially the new members who, yeah, that ship had sailed and we forced you guys to swim out, and we apologize for that. I think that the superintendent, the staff, we have done most we can within the fixed amount of resources we have, and that's a common theme, I think, in education throughout the nation.
Thank you, sir. Just about everything's been said that needed to be said. I will mention the budget myself, that it starts in our schools with a zero-based budget, our principals and their staffs work on their budget, and they do start in September, as was mentioned earlier, and when I started on the board 11 budgets ago, 12 budgets ago, I'm not sure what it was, we had a lot more things to do, because I don't think the rigor was put into the budget before it got to us. I think a lot of it was put on us, which is fine, but it's better this way, because our people down in the trenches know better what needs to be spent, and then that comes forward to us. Not all of it, obviously, there's a lot of things that don't come forward because they know we just can't afford that, but I was very proud of our staff in the schools and then at Central Office, the way it came forward to us, and I think it was the best-prepared budget we've had in my 11 or 12 years, considering the things that Mr. Albrecht brought forward is on lack of funds. And I have to disagree with Mr. Williams a little bit, we don't need equality with women, they need to be above the men, because I'm looking around here and they win. So, equality at least.
I've been told that they're the smarter sex, and I'm not arguing with them.
I'm not arguing either, because I would lose that argument. The spelling bee she said she was in, did you get past the first round? Well, I sure didn't. And this Saturday is the mulch delivery that the boosters and the football team do every year. Coach Lane, Ron Lane, class of '82, I believe, sent out a message requesting all football players to come and help, and that doesn't mean current ones, so if any former players, we will have players from the first team, or at least a player from the first team all the way through today, so if anybody wants to come out and help, we need all the help we can get. It's a lot of work delivering all that mulch. Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I add one more thing?
You didn't, you know, you only talked for an hour and a half, Pam, so go ahead.
Well, now I'm Pam. So, I've got the names of the Fine Arts Scholarship donors. There were three donors. One was Mike Vanderpool, the other was Nancy Ingram, and we got a donation from the Manassas Rotary Club. Thank you to all.
Thank you, ma'am. That was a back-ended compliment, by the way. We'll move to citizens' comments, I have no one signed up, does anyone want to speak? All right, well, I got to read this, hold on one second. "At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and the affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda to keep, we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response does not, to your comments, should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments." And if you can, your name and where you live, and then sign up over here when you're done. You've got three minutes.
I've got three minutes. My name is Deborah Konzer, I live at 10326 Sarajevo Court in Manassas. There are a couple things I want to touch on. One, I would like to say thank you to the Education Foundation and those other people who helped bring the suicide prevention thing to Osborne the other night. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the evening one for parents as much as I wanted to, because I had a prior commitment, but my son came home, and actually, I was picking him up after school, and he got in the car, and the first thing he said to me was to tell me about it, and he thought, because it was really good, Mom, you should go. So, I just wanted to let you know that he actually got a lot out of it, it got him thinking about things, about stresses in his life, things he had seen amongst his friends and stuff like that, too, and hopefully, in the future, it's something that just makes him more aware of all the people around him and the various social things that go on as well. So, I just want to say thank you for that. Because we have an agenda to keep, we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response does not, to your comments, should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments." And if you can, your name and where you live, and then sign up over here when you're done.
Okay.
You got three minutes.
I got three minutes. My name is Deborah Konzer, I live at 10326 Sarajevo Court in Manassas. There are a couple of things I wanna touch on. One, I would like to say thank you to the Education Foundation and those other people who helped bring the suicide prevention thing to Osborne the other night. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the evening one for parents as much as I wanted to because I had a prior commitment, but my son came home and, actually, I was picking him up after school, and he got in the car, and the first thing he said to me was to tell me about it. And he thought, because it was really good, Mom, you should go. So I just wanted to let you know that he actually got a lot out of it. It got him thinking about things, about stresses in his life, things he had seen amongst his friends and stuff like that, too. And hopefully, in the future, it's something that just makes him more aware of all the people around him and the various social things that go on as well. So I just wanna say thank you for that. And the second topic, I just wanna say that also, as a parent, as an Osborne parent, I have been disturbed by some of the rumors that have been going around as well. I do not like the fact that people have said things without necessarily knowing what is true or not true. The letter that I received was very to the point, but not informative at all, and I realize that there are restraints with concern to privacy and procedure that you have to follow. But I would urge you to give out information when you can, because I think the lack of information is feeding some of these rumors. And some of the rumors that go on are detrimental to the school system, to our principal, to the students, and to our whole Osborne family. And nobody deserves to have their reputations destroyed. And the students deserve to have a certain amount of comfort in where they are. That said, it is also my firm belief, having lived through three different, the last three principals, that the best solution would be to get Kathy Benner back into the schools as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Debbie, can you sign up? Thank you. I should've caught you before you walked all the way up there, but I get your steps in that way. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move the school board of the City of Manassas, adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albright, second by Mr. Williams, is there any discussion?
Sir, I just have one, one thing to point out as it relates to the policies we discussed two meetings ago, just for the board to know, because there are a lot of policies, and for the community to know, there is one that we talked about at the last one, that we wanna do a little bit more on, VSBAs come forward with some changes. And that one is GBE-C, which relates to a tobacco-free school for staff and students. So we're going to just be reexamining some of the language in there and talk about it at the next committee meeting.
So that's not on the consent agenda?
That is not for tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Motion by Mr. Albright, second by Mr. Williams, the school board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Discussion, Baldwin Intermediate Update. Ms. Wagner, I wonder where your status was?
Well, I'm happy to provide you with that.
Your status with us is the principal of Baldwin Intermediate.
Oh, yes. Status is the principal of Baldwin Intermediate School this upcoming school year, and I am very pleased to be able to provide you with this update, Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGlock, and members of the board. I would like to start out by providing you with some high-level information. Possibly. Okay. I didn't wanna close out of it. So our official mascot at Baldwin Intermediate School is that of the Husky. Our school colors are blue and gray, and our instructional hours will be consistent with that of Mayfield Intermediate School, which are 7:35 until 2:40. I am very pleased to tell you that our building master schedule has been developed, and not only that, but teachers have been identified and assignments provided. Also, we have a school website, should you like to visit us on the web, that is our web address, and you can find additional information on Baldwin Intermediate School there. So as I mentioned, the teachers have been identified and assignments provided, as illustrated here. It was an incredible and exciting experience to have these wonderful educators present to welcome and get to know their future intermediate school students on our Rising Fifth Grade Field Trip, which took place last Monday. And so those are just a few photos from the event. Additionally, we will also have, this upcoming Friday, a meeting for staff to get together, all Baldwin Intermediate staff, to get to know one another and get acclimated to their building, and so have that time to collaborate and get to know the building. Here you'll see our fifth grade encore choices, and I am very excited to be able to provide all of these opportunities and choices to our students. And again, as I mentioned, staff have been assigned, and you can see them illustrated here as well. So, a little bit of information about our incoming inaugural class of Baldwin Intermediate School students. Their first interaction with their soon-to-be intermediate school was that of selecting their school mascot, which was selected to be that of the Husky. They then, earlier this year, were visited by their music teachers to explain to them a little bit about the music program, because it's very exciting in the City of Manassas here that all of our fifth grade students are afforded some choice as they transition from elementary to intermediate school in that of their music selections. And so they were visited by their music teachers to discuss program details and those choices available to them. They then selected those choices, and those choices for our students continue to drive their individualized schedules. And as I mentioned, on March 20th, I had the highlight of this process for me thus far, as I got to welcome my students incoming for next year, to get to know them, greet them, welcome them to their school, and introduce them to their teachers and counselors for next year, as well as provide them with some information about intermediate school, and allow them to tour the school. This event truly set the tone for the collaborative and engaging environment and caring tone that will be set at Baldwin Intermediate School. Students were excited and engaged, teachers were prepared and engaged as well, and even our Osborne Leadership students came over to join us to help facilitate and foster that excitement and engagement as well. In addition to the tours and information, the students collaborated with one another, getting to know their future classmates a little bit, and came up with, as a group, their top names for the Husky, so that they can select their school mascot's name. Followed by, then, they got to individually cast their ballot before they left us for the day, and they cast those individual ballots while simultaneously filling out just a brief introductory survey, so that we could gather some information about what they were excited for in intermediate school, or things that they may like to see in their intermediate school. So those votes have been tallied, but I cannot share those results with you this evening because I promised them that those would be announced when I saw them next at the Rising Fifth Grade Family Night. So speaking of family engagement and communication, the first week of February, our Baldwin Intermediate School families received a letter just welcoming them to the Baldwin Intermediate School community, as well as providing them in advance with some important dates, so that they could put those on their calendar. They then also, the first week of March, received an additional letter which outlined additional Baldwin Intermediate School details, again, important dates, and course descriptions. So those letters went out to our current zoned Baldwin Intermediate School students, but if there is anyone listening this evening who is not in the Baldwin Intermediate School zone, transfer requests are available, and that window opened March 15th and will remain open through May 15th, should you be interested in attending Baldwin Intermediate School despite not being in that current zone. And those can be found online or in your school main office. Additionally, families will receive further information throughout the coming months to invite them to additional events, so that we can truly solidify and continue to build that school-home partnership. But our next scheduled event is, as I mentioned, our Rising Fifth Grade Family Night on May 24th, and that is where the families will come with their students and receive in person those Baldwin Intermediate School details, and have the opportunity to ask questions, meet one another, get to know myself, staff, as well as one another, and tour with their child the building. And also, we will announce the results of the student votes at that event. And August 14th, so I mentioned that the student selections will continue to drive our scheduling, those will be mailed home to students the week of August 14th, so that they have those in advance of our student orientation, which will take place August 25th, prior to the first day of school, where we will be excited to welcome them. We've also set on the calendar our back-to-school night date of September 13th. And so families have these important dates, and as I said, additional information will be continuing to come out to those families. But the letters that went home to the families already are visible on our website, and we will continue to keep that updated as we progress up to the start of the school year. But lastly, I'd just like to say, for anyone listening this evening who is interested in getting involved early, be that volunteering, PTO membership, et cetera, or if they'd just like to tour the building, please do not hesitate to contact the school. And that is it. So thank you all very much, again, for your time and the opportunity to share some information about Baldwin Intermediate.
Thank you very much. Let me say quickly, if everything goes anywhere close to smoothly as has gone so far, it's gonna be a great opening, and I'm sure it will be. But everybody, staff, you, have done a very good job preparing everybody, I think. We won't know it until, you know, September, but it sure does seem, yeah, not, you know, it sure does seem like everything is in place. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I echo what you're saying. I mean, we talked best practices, and we appointed the principal a year in advance, who's had the time, the dedication, the commitment to be engaged, engage the community, and do what's right. And it seems like that's common sense, but I can tell you, not every school system does that when they open a new school. And often about this time, you're either going, "Oh heck, we gotta start advertising for a principal and staff," and figure all this out in two weeks. So, you know, I look at our superintendent and say, "We're doing it right."
Ma'am?
Just a, hold on a sec. Just a quick question. Thank you for this. It's really, I think, informative and it, like, echoing what folks had said before us. It sounds like we've kinda got things under control, so congratulations. A question, because I know it's a question that the community's had, I'm glad to see that the times align with the other intermediate school, because I know that was a concern of the community. A question about the after-school activity offerings as well. Can you just speak a little to those? I think it might've been addressed at Saturday with the superintendent, but I was not able to attend this time, so.
Thank you.
For me and the community, could you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent question. So I can tell you, we are still in the planning stages of making sure that everything is solidified, and we will keep that information communicated on an ongoing basis as that is solidified. But what I can tell you right now, absolutely, is all of our fifth grade students in the City of Manassas, regardless of what intermediate school they attend, will be afforded the same opportunities and choices as any other student. So Baldwin Intermediate, Mayfield Intermediate, they will have all of the same opportunities.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seventeen eighteen school calendar. Mr. Lane?
Oh, sorry. Good evening. Chairman Di Maria, I was about to say Superintendent Di Maria.
Yeah, I got it's gonna happen.
Superintendent Di Maria, Superintendent McGlock, Honorable members of the board. This evening, I'm here to present a proposed change to the previously approved calendar for year 2017-2018. These changes are adding three early release days to the previously approved calendar. The background on these changes, Dr. McGlock, as she was going through the budget development process, heard from teachers that they would like more time for planning, grading, and reporting. She asked us to look at the seventeen eighteen calendar to see where can we fit in some additional early release days to provide that relief for our teachers. We looked at the calendar to try to find where we can maximize the early release days for teachers and have minimal impact on instruction. And we've, we identified three days. The first day, I know it's on Pulp Calendar, it's easier to look at. I circled these days on the calendar with the red circles. The first day we identified would be in September of this fall, the day before the first interim is due, it'd give the teachers that afternoon to work on grading and planning. These early release days will not be for professional development, these are for the teachers' planning, grading, reporting time, so they'll be protected. The next day we identified would be in October, the last day of the quarter, October 26th. And the third early release day would be in February 2018, the day before the interim, before the third quarter. These days were identified, once again, to maximize the benefit for the teacher, minimize the impact in instruction, and the continuity of the calendar. That concludes my seventeen eighteen presentation.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Sure? Nothing?
Thank you, Mr. Lane, for working with the, turn this off. Thank you, Mr. Lane, for working with the academic committee and with the teachers, superintendent, to identify these days, we're always trying to do, we can maximize the best thing for our kids and for our staff. So thank you for the work on that.
Ms. Matt, do you have something?
Yes, just quickly. At first, when I heard about these, I was kind of against the whole idea, now I think it's great that our teachers get extra time, but I, half-days are kinda hard for students because you get in and then you have half of your class time, so it's not, it's kinda hard to get a lot done. But now that I see, like, where they are, and for the teachers, I'm really glad that they're gonna have this time, because I know that they're always running crazy, like, especially around these times. So even though half-days are hard for students, it's really important for our teachers to have this time. So I'm glad that is when they are. You changed my mind.
Anyone else? Nobody else to follow that? Okay, proposed eighteen nineteen school calendar. Mr. Lane, you again?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria, Superintendent McGlock, Honorable members of the board.
Here we are.
I am back. The next agenda I'll present is eighteen nineteen school calendar. This year, we did something different. We did our survey staff, as we always do, but we presented five different versions of the calendar, to share different instances of different days off, to show staff at the selection, to try to give them more input. We emailed it out to 1,100 employees, we had 589 people participate, and at the end of that first survey, of those five versions, version one and version five were identified with the most votes. The interesting thing is, version one and version five are complete opposites versions of one another. Five had the minimal days off with the earliest release for the students. Version one had a typical, traditional breaks built into it, as we always have. Both were pre-Labor Day starts. So what we did, since we had so many versions the first time, we decided to send out a second survey. This is something new, we hadn't done before. So we did a second survey on those two versions, to the same group of staff. We had 507 people respond to these two different versions. The response group to both surveys were very identical to the type of positions that responded, so the response was almost identical. In the second version, 67% of the people chose version one, 33% chose version five. And tonight, version one is the version I'm presenting, with the additional early release days added to it. Some common themes in the comments that we received, a lot of comments supporting the spring break with the extra Monday off this year, with the extra Tuesday for the current year. But Labor Day, they, there were some questions about pre-Labor Day start. Winter break, everyone supported, pretty much everyone supported a 10-day winter break. President's Day, also known as George Washington's birthday, all supported. There were many comments about President's Day, supporting that in the Columbus Day. One thing I want to remind people, and this is hard, calendars are difficult, because it's a math equation, really, when it boils down to the brass tacks of it. We have to count for 247 working days for total month employees, we also have to count for 195 assigned days for teachers, and 180 instructional days for students. So the proposed calendar, I won't read through all these dates, but we will start in, the first day for teachers to report would be August 16th, our first day for students would be August 27th, which will be the same day as Prince William, and then the last day for students would be June 13th, last day for staff would be June 14th. And this, again, is version one, with all of our traditional breaks built in, and the early release days added. Now here, the early release Now here, the early release day in the spring did not fall at interim time. We put it at the last day of the quarter because of continuity of instruction. If you look at the month of March, there were no other days with breaks. This makes better sense to put it in March than to put it in January, than to put it in February, when there are so many breaks already built in the February. So that will be a difference. When you look at the number of days between August 16th and June 14th, there's 217 possible days we can use. Once we back out the professional development, teacher work days, which were 13, and we back out the remaining days for each of those holidays, that leaves us with 180 days. And that's how the calendar equates at the end of the math equation. And that concludes my eighteen nineteen presentation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, yes. First, some folks may think that when we do the calendar, we kind of just sit in the room and throw spitballs and try to pick out holidays and what have you, but we have endeavored seriously to take into account the needs of parents, staff, faculty, and we take that very seriously. I take that very seriously as the chaired academic committee. The fact that we have 500 respondents is better than the percentage of folks who vote in the presidential election, so that's pretty good. So we can satisfy everybody, but we really, truly try to take into account everyone's feelings while healing to the constraints we have. So I thank you for your time and effort, and I know it takes time and energy to do that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the feedback we received, and I hope that we have a calendar which the community appreciates and can be proud of, because we're always trying to tweak it to make it good for everyone. So thank you for your work, and thank you for all the staff that participated, because we couldn't have done this without their feedback.
That's right. Thank you, sir, and thank you to the academic committee for overseeing this. Anyone else?
Sir.
Mr. Robert?
I'd like to echo what Mr. Williams said, because certainly, this is the most thankless thing the board does, bar none. And we try to balance the academic needs to achieve the best in student achievement we can, realizing there is contraction of learning, negative learning, whatever you want to call it, over the summer, it just happens, it's a fact, it's elasticity. Balancing the needs of our staff and their desires, and also meeting the needs of our parents, and realizing sometimes there are conflicting priorities. So I really do appreciate the work that goes into this. The question I have, and I generally have, is we also have regional things that we are aligned with our neighboring jurisdictions on, whether it's ROTC, nursing programs, the governor's school. How does this map to where we think our surrounding jurisdictions are, and what kind of conflicts, if any, will they cause?
The, we try to, we do try to align as closely as we can. Prince William County, I don't believe, has finished their eighteen calendar yet. I think they're probably a month or so out from that. There are differences at times, and at those times, we let the program calendar take care of that, and then our students, like such as the governor's school, will come back to our building, and there will be activities for them to support them in those, you know, times that are off. But we do work very hard to try to align as best as we can.
I just had a quick question about the day in March, March 29th. You said that was a half-day instead of a teacher work day. Why is it a half-day rather than a full day off? Because I know, like, we're going to have a day off on Friday, like we do for the end of the quarter for teachers to do all that, so why is that?
That's a great question. It comes back to math. If I turn that into a student holiday, I have to add a day at the end, or take a holiday away somewhere. If you go, that's a great, that's actually a really good question, because if you go back to here, I've got to take one of these days then.
Got it.
Away. And that may be, maybe instead of winter break, it's 10, maybe it's nine, to add to that day. That's a great question.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your efforts. Okay, we will move on to the action agenda and Virginia School Board Association's Business Honor Roll. Ms. Radford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia School Boards Association established the Business Honor Roll as a way for school divisions to publicly recognize and thank local businesses for their support that they provide for our students and staff. Tonight, you have a resolution before you, and your approval will grant us the opportunity to nominate the following businesses to V S B A for recognition at the April board meeting. That would be Swift, Bookworm Central, and Hetzel Architects. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I remove the School Board of the City of Manassas' approved resolution R 2017 dash zero four, the 2017 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Do we have discussion?
Would you like your read, sir?
Yes, would you want to do that?
I'd be glad to.
Okay, good. I don't want to stumble through any big words.
Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society, now and in the future, therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of the City of Manassas hereby names Hetzel Architects Swift and Bookworm Central the 2017 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for their ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? I'll point out that the Hetzel Architects, there's about 400 Hetzel boys, and they are ours. So they are Osborn graduates, and we appreciate it. They're not architects, but we appreciate the Hetzels and their continuing support of our schools. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, and a second by Mr. Williams. That the School Board of the City of Manassas approved resolution R 2017 dash zero four dash 2017, Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. And now, is this the school board budget? Mr. Andy Hawkins, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, is going to present the school board's budget. This is the budget that we will be voting on tonight, and Mr. Hawkins will be presenting that for us.
Good evening, Chairman De Maria, Honorable superintendent, and school board members. The School Board of the City of Manassas devoted many hours of work to the budget process. Six budget work sessions were held, three public hearings, three finance committee meetings, in order to produce a physically responsible budget for the 2017-2018 school year. So please let me, allow me to share some of the highlights from the budget process, some of the obstacles that we faced during this process. From the beginning, from the very beginning, M C P S was faced with a revenue loss of $760,000 from the, and this from the General Assembly's adopted budget just eight months prior. Through the General Assembly, we were also faced a increase in the Virginia retirement system rates, which caused the division an additional $1.3 million. And then there was also, we were informed of an increase in employee health insurance program, which caused the school division approximately $750,000. Should this budget be approved tonight, the staff in the School Board of the City of Manassas has much to be proud of. Staff will receive a step on the salary scale, validating our commitment to them and to the integrity of our compensation program totaling $1.3 million. Academic course offerings for students increased at Osborne High School through the addition of more career and technical education programs. This funding supports classes in cybersecurity, STEM, H V A C, and an E M T program. Alden Elementary will become a project lead-the-way school, and Hayden will continue to its expansion as a dual-emergent Spanish program to grade one. All of these academic improvements were added at a cost of $852,000. A tuition reimbursement program, which our employees have been requesting for many years, will begin in an amount of $60,000, so that our employees can be reimbursed for professional development. The board continued its commitment to the capital improvement plan, thereby ensuring that M C P S facilities are safe and well-maintained, the bus fleet is maintained within established guidelines, and the technology infrastructure is sustained to meet the ever-growing needs of our students and teachers. The board continued its commitment to the one-to-one technology initiative at Osborne High School, despite the expiration of the grant that funded this program over the last four years. And finally, the school board increased the long-term financial stability of this school division by reducing the division's dependence on its fund balance by 80%. The school board of the City of Manassas accomplished this even though the student population continues to increase, becomes more diverse, and is more economically disadvantaged than ever before, despite receiving the same funding per student on a per-student basis as we did 10 years ago. While much was accomplished with this budget, the school board could not enhance the employee's salary scales, but kept the integrity of the step increase for every employee. The school board has requested that a teacher and staff committee led by human resources be established to identify options for board consideration during next year's budget process, to ensure that the M C P S salary scale and benefit package is competitive in the marketplace. We want to do this in order to continue to attract and retain high-quality staff. The school board, staff, and community have much to be proud of, as the public will see So we, this is a five-step process that we have gone through. We went from our school and department request of almost $108 million down to $97.8 million that we are presenting tonight, hoping for a school board approval. Some of the item unmet needs, you'll see on your screen, these are all personnel requests from throughout the division, approximately $1.7 million in total. Some of those requests for like a 1% COLA, retention and longevity plan, make up the majority of those requests. Some of the non-personnel requests that were not made, you'll see that we have gifted in talent in expansion, approximately $304,000. New buses and drivers to restore it back to the four-tier bus schedule at $3.2 million, and some other reductions that have been made through other departments, and you can see they encompassed all the schools, all of the departments, even throughout the division. The next sheet here totaling approximately $3.8 million are changes in staffing that was done from our current appropriation. You can see that we have some changes in academic coaches, energy conservation specialists, and intervention specialists throughout the division. All of these, all of these changes totaled approximately $11.7 million. So during the budget process, we started off with the superintendent's proposed budget that was based on the governor's budget. Since that time, the General Assembly has adjourned, and they provided us an update, they provided us with approximately $45,000 in additional funding over above what the governor had done. We took those funds, and we have used them to reduce the use of fund balance. So the breakdown of our operating fund expenditures, we are a manpower, staff-driven organization. 81% of all of our budget for operating funds go to personnel and benefits. We have, again, established a $250,000 contingency fund to be used to, based on our enrollment needs and our staffing needs come September. That's what these funds are always used for. If we have increased student enrollment or different student needs in September, we will use those, that $250,000, to fix those problems if they should occur. Materials and supplies, about $4.3 million. Purchased services, approximately $10.4 million. So how does this break down by, where is the money spent? What we have on the screen, approximately 70, almost 75% of all the money is being spent on school-based costs. I think this number is a little deceptive, and you should realize that, you know, these special ed, and English is a second language, ESOL expenditures, money for student achievements, certainly all the money, a lot of the money spent in information technology services, all of these are spent at the school. These are, these funds are used to support a lot of activities within the school. You see approximately $2.5 million in facility maintenance, health and student services, $1.3 million, all the way down. So how is our, how is our funding spread out? We have about, we have $97,889,000 in the operating fund, and we've moved our use of our fund balance down from, it's over $3 million in FY17, to down to $575,000 in FY18. You can see that the amount of the operating fund from the city contributions, state funds, and other funding sources, which are primarily building rentals and some fees and things like that. Food service budget is $4.1 million, $4,160,000, with that fund using approximately $195,000 of their fund balance. So what other funds are out there? We have debt service fund, which is payments on the money that we've borrowed over the years, approximately $7.4 million in the debt service fund, and $3.4 million in the capital projects fund. That means, meets our, brings our total budget, all revenues from all funds, both local, state, federal, to $116,578,000. Just to remind you, what our capital improvement plan that was adopted, I think in December, shows, we have, again, we have the $3.4 million, we have our division-wide technology, these are infrastructure upgrades, school bus replacement funds to, for buses who have passed their useful life, school bus additions, if we need to have or buy additional buses due to enrollment growth. And then you'll see some of the other parking lot improvements, main gym bleacher replacement, H V A C replacements at Osborne, auditorium improvements, hallway flooring replacement at Metz, and painting of Mayfield and Hayden this school year, this summer. So we've got a lot of work to do this summer. So overall, you can look at, while I talk about our fund balances, comparing where we were in FY16 versus FY17, you can see the dramatic change in the use of fund balance. And I stress this, because this is putting us on, making this school division more financially stable going forward. It's very important that our budget be in structural balance. So that's the end of the presentation. You can see that we've had these budget work sessions, we have public input sessions, and now tonight, we're asking for the school board approval of the budget.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I remove the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 2017-2018 budget as presented, in the amount of $116,578,072, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of the City of Manassas, in accordance with the School Board policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Sir.
From my perspective, really, observations. We kind of talked about the funding upfront. As Mr. Hawkins went through things, he identified almost $12 million worth of, you know, if I flipped the coin, I'd call them unfunded mandates of needs, and if we were doing what the state constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia requires in submitting a needs-based budget, this budget would probably be almost $12 million higher. But we are presenting a budget that meets the constraints we have set within us, within the City of Manassas, that comes with risk and cost. We still haven't fully addressed our transportation needs. We talk about our licensed staff, the people who make the biggest difference. We did not include the cost of living. Our neighboring jurisdictions are, we continue to move further away from parity, and that at some point will adversely affect recruitment and retention. And even at the lowest level, where we talk about adding $60,000 for education assistance for our staff, we've got about 1,000 employees. We talk about lifelong learning, that's about $60 a person. So we're really not putting our money where our mouth is when it comes to lifelong learning either. So we've done the best we can, is I think the way I'd put it.
Because we don't have any more money.
That's right.
Right.
Any other discussion? Mr. Williams?
Just a comment, it's another observation. There are many things in this budget that I wish we could change, and fortunately, one of the constraints we do have is money. There's a quote, I'm not sure who said it, but it's basically that in a situation where you're encountering, you know, difficult choices, you can just try to do the best you can with what you have where you are. And I think that we've endeavored to do that. The budget's not perfect, I would not claim it was, but I do know that we have perfect intentions to try to create the best budget for our city and for our kids. I thank the staff for their hard work on this and everyone who provided input, and we will continue to try to do the best we can with what we have, what we are.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I want to talk about the salary increases and the fact that we went with a step rather than a COLA. Mr. Hawkins touched on it. To me personally, the salary scale needs to be as truthful as it can be. When you give a COLA and not a step, your employees stay on the same step even though they've worked longer. And I'm proud that we are not perfect, but we are very close to being, having our staff on the step that they're supposed to be on. And a lot of neighboring jurisdictions aren't even close. So I think that is more important than a COLA. As the gentleman said, I wish there were more funds to go around. I wish we could pay for more learning for our educators. I wish we could give a COLA. As Mr. Hawkins pointed out, we just can't. The funds aren't there. I am proud of the work that went into this budget by everyone. I'm not especially proud of the budget because we don't have the opportunity to do exactly what we would like to do, but I think this board and the staff has done an outstanding job with what they've been given.
Anyone else?
A motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the FY 2017-2018 budget as presented in the amount of $116,578,072, and authorize the school board chairman to transmit these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Thank you, everyone. The CIP and the five-year forecast, Mr. Hawkins?
Albert, can you pull up the five-year forecast, please? The five-year forecast. So in front of you tonight, you have the five-year forecast that you've seen throughout our budget work sessions, and we had to...
Sorry.
It's okay. All right, thank you. So going forward, we have placed forward the amount of revenue that the general assembly has adopted by the state, and that we have projected 2% increases going forward from 2019 through 2022. As far as the city revenue is concerned, we do have a funding agreement with the city through 2019. I think that funding agreement will be discussed, I think it's up for discussion again this summer, and we will be evaluating it going forward of where we will go. At this point in time, we only know what agreement we have right now, so we have used those, continued with those projections going forward through, for 2021 and 22, even though we don't have a formal agreement established with the city at this time for those periods of time. The expenditures are based, FY '17 and FY '18 are based on the adopted budgets that we have. FY '19 through '22 are based on 2% increases going throughout, with our grant funds maintaining and our food service funds remaining static throughout that period of time. Based on all of this information, when you go down and you start looking at, also you're looking at the bond proceeds that we were talking, that we have scheduled going out through 2022 through some of the projects, and how that's going to affect our debt service going forward. At the end of the day, at the bottom line is, is that we believe that our fund balance will go through for a period of time, where it will expand until when we get out to 2022, changes will need to be made in either our revenue streams or our expenditures to be able to account for this. Of course, we, as a school board, are not allowed to be, have a negative number going out. But there's so much that can change between now and 2022, it's hard to predict at this time. But for the foreseeable future, we are, I shouldn't say, is in good shape as we've ever been, right? I mean, we've been at 1%, 1.5%, you know, 2% like this for many years. So I think we do have a good viable plan. It's very conservative at this, right now, and we are expecting that it will get better as things become known from the state and federal authorities. So tonight, we're asking for your approval of the five-year forecast. You've already approved the CIP, so I don't think we need to approve that again.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the 2018-2022 five-year forecast as presented, and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2018-2022 CIP and five-year forecast to the city council of the City of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer. Is there any discussion?
Observation, because when we talked about the budget, and we just talked about the five-year forecast, and Mr. Hawkins just said we're kind of in as good a shape as we have ever been, I mean, you wouldn't paint it personally that rosy because of the difficult decisions we have made in the current budget. And when you look at the challenging environment we have been in the probably 10 years that we've had a bilateral agreement with the city, we have seen a tripling of our population of children in poverty. We've seen a huge spiked increase in the number of children we have who cannot speak English as a native language. The number of challenges we face are unimaginable, were unimaginable 10 years ago. And when we look at the future relative to where it is now, it's just compounding numbers based upon a set of assumptions. The reality is, the funding of education, the Commonwealth of Virginia, based upon what the general assembly is doing, based on what the federal government's doing, is going to in the next three to four years come down to the local level.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I'll let him stay in trouble. I'll be better. We have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve fiscal year 2018-2022 five-year forecast as presented, and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2018-2022 CIP and five-year forecast to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy, Virginia State Code, and joint budget agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Contracts over $100,000 sole source purchase. Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. Chair, we would like to recommend to the school board tonight that they approve a sole source purchase for K-12 intervention support staffing to Public Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $1.6 million.
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas approve the award of the sole source purchase for the K-12 intervention support staffing to Public Consulting Group, Stanton, Virginia, in the not-to-exceed amount of $1.6 million.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion? I'll have a little bit. I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. Everybody's thoughts that were brought forward, excuse me, were considered greatly. This may not be the greatest move that could be made if funding was different, but we believe, as a body, I believe we'll find out in a vote here, that this is the best move we have right now. And the, it's a cost not to exceed $1.6 million. So very difficult decisions. Satisfied with what we're doing. I wish we had funds to do something else, but I think we may be pleasantly surprised over this whole procedure. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that school board of the City of Manassas approves the award of the sole source purchase for K-12 intervention support staffing to Public Consulting Group, Stanton, Virginia, in the not-to-exceed amount of $1.6 million. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. 2017-2018 salary schedules. Who's up? Ms. Wingfield, somebody.
What I'm presenting to you is the support salary schedules, which is, I'm very pleased. When I first got here, they weren't listed out by positions. We've listed them out by day count and by the hour, so anybody can easily see what our schedules look like, and they can find their position and their hourly and annual salary. Oops, I don't know how to work this. This is the extra pay for extra-duty schedule. I'm not going to be able to do this. Yes?
It's fun to watch, though.
The administrative salary schedule. And then we identified our licensed salary schedules. We have three, 220 days, 210 days, and 200 days.
And those contracts are based on their duties.
But it's based...
210 or 220?
Right, based on their day count, that is correct. Whether they have a bachelor's, a BA plus 15 hours, a master's, a master's plus 30 And then that's a placement guide for new staff, so someone who needs a division based on the years of experience, up to 15 years, that identifies their step placement on our salary scale.
Unfortunately, these haven't changed.
Well, this is actually the fairness you talked about.
Right, it is.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the 2017-2018 salary schedules as presented.
Motion by Mr. Williams, motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion?
Full disclosure, sir. I'd just like to observe that Mr. Hen, spouse, your wife, my wife, are all employed by the City of Manassas, but they are individual employees, and that relationship in no way jeopardizes our ability to vote on this effort.
Correct.
We're voting on the totality, not any individual.
If you left out, my wife's not, you know, part of the group.
She's got a better gig.
Yeah. All right. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the fiscal year 2017-2018 salary schedules as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero.
This document...
Health insurance premium.
I'm sorry. This document shows our proposed medical insurance premiums. We did have an increase, just like the majority of America has. So I don't know how far you want me to go as we reviewed it. We showed last year's premiums, and then we compared it to this year's premiums, and the document just identifies what the premium costs for the employees and the employer, whether it's employee-only, employee-plus-one, or employee-plus-family.
Mr., oops, I got to run out some. Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas approve the FY 2017-2018 insurance plans and premiums as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion?
My, I'll get full disclosure, it's previous deal, though we don't use these, City South Care.
We do. All right, so I'm the only one that's got a disclose. So, and I used it quite a bit last year. Sorry about the race, folks. The old ticker just said, you know, we're going to raise those rates a little bit. Okay, it's not funny anymore. This is serious stuff. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve fiscal year 2017-2018 insurance plans and premiums as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. And we have completed the action agenda. Can I get a motion for closed session?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings as allowed by section 2.2, I'm sorry, 22.1277.2-1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for the following purposes. 22.1277.2:1, discussion of students, STUE 1617-01, STUE 1617-02, and STUE 1617-03. And the school board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemption from open meetings as allowed by section 2.23711. Part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. Part A, paragraph one, discussion of personnel matters and personnel items 1617-0467 and
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. That the school board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 22.1-277.2:1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. Discussion of students, STUE 161701, 02, and 03. That the school board enter... Let the school board enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for the following purpose. Discussion of personnel matters, PERS 1617 dash zero four six seven, and dash zero four eight zero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven zero. Thank you all for being here. We will now adjourn to closed...